Recording in progress.
Okay, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope the second half goes a little bit faster. Regarding case calling BOA 134-8170, 109 Ellington Street. This is a rect. A three-family resident with front decks and rear parking. The violation is Article 60, Section 41.1, conforming with existing building alignment. Article 60, Section 9, lot areas insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the additional lot areas insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, usable open spaces insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9, the side yard insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Lawrence Estacara, 175 Federal Street. I'm appearing before the board with Michael Kenny. He was petitioning so he could construct a three-family house on the site on which the three-family house was located until it was a fire about 50 years ago. Those of us who've been in the city for a long time understands that there were lots of fires back 50 years ago. And the good news is now people like Mr. Kenny are coming forward and trying to build houses on those same locations. In this case, a three-unit building in a site where the neighborhood has a majority of buildings which are three-deckered. We all know the zoning code has changed a lot in 50 years. And that's why it's necessary we get relief from the board for all the reasons which have been cited. The petitioner appeared before in a butters meeting on the 21st of July. He was connected by Denise Dos Santos, who subsequently has left ONS. Mr. Kenny reported the proposal was well-received since these are going to be homeownership and when it was shown that there are three parking spaces so each residence can have a dedicated space to the rear of the property. There's also been discussions with the Erie Ellington Neighborhood Association as well as with Councilor Worrell's office. Mr. Kenny's on the call, available to respond to any questions members of the board might have regarding this opportunity to create three market-grade housing units in Ward 14.
Thank you, Mr. Estacara. So, since the fire 50 years ago, this lot has been vacant?
It's been a vacant lot, yes.
Okay, all right. And it looks like it's going to be kind of a relatively traditional triple-decker design?
Yep, porch is in the front, absolutely.
All right, and what is the, what are the unit sizes of the three units?
Michael, do you have those numbers off the top of your head? I think he's, I thought he was on the call, maybe he's not.
Okay, I saw it's a, it's a uniform floor plan.
Right.
The Barazza, you can probably.
Floor plans, yeah.
Yeah, can probably figure out from the overall dimensions. All right. Do you know, Mr. Estacara, is the footprint of this proposal similar to the footprint of the house that burned down?
Yes, not identical, but similar.
Okay. All right, Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
Drawings, excuse me, drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? All right, is there anyone here to speak either in favor or opposed on the position of the project?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise Dos Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record and state that the applicant did meet back in July with Directa Butters as well as the Erie and Islandson Neighborhood Group. There has been an uptake in violence in that area and neighborhood. So I haven't been able to get the stance from the president of the association. So I don't, I do want to put that on record. But at this time, our office would like to defer any judgment to the board. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Santos, what was the, what was the general feeling that you did get?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't receive any opposition from Directa Butters or anyone for this, for 109 Ellington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair Secretary, we have one letter of support from Councilor Worrell.
Okay.
I have no additional requests.
Okay, well, limited input, but, all right, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put before a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yep.
I too am in favor. The motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 139-1894-52, Rockney Avenue. It's an existing building, a one-story wood-framed bungalow style. The proposed project would include the renovation of the first and full second-floor addition, two bedrooms. Violation is Article 65, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Glenn Hawthorne with GPH Design. Address is 1 Adams Street in Milton, on the, representing the owner. 52 Rockney Avenue, Architect, Architect of Record.
All right, you want to go ahead and walk us through the proposal?
Yes. The existing structure is a one-story bungalow-style home. It has about 1,200 square feet of living space. What the owner proposes to do is add a second floor, which would include the addition of three bedrooms, including a master suite and two bathrooms. The proposed design would stay within the existing footprint of the house. We are looking for relief for FAR. The FAR as a result of the project would be .62 and what's allowed is .5. And the existing rear yard, as existing, is 18.6 and 20 feet is required by zoning. In addition, the front yard, the existing is 10.1 and the required is 15 feet. So we're looking for relief on those three items.
All right, and most of those insufficiencies need, most of those insufficiencies are based on the existing condition of the existing footprint, right?
That's correct, they all are.
They are, okay, all right. This is a single-family home now and it will continue to be?
Correct.
Okay. I'm looking at the drawings. Do we have any elevations that show? Okay.
Yeah, I have the existing and the proposed elevations.
Okay, so it'll, it'll still be a gamble-style roof?
Yeah, if you scroll down to the next slide, you'll see the proposed roof.
Yeah, okay. All right, how are the drawings, Mr. Barazza?
Drawings are adequate, no questions.
Any questions from the board? All right, is anyone here to speak on the project?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office received no concerns for this proposal. A number of abutters, we have 24 in total, have written in support of this project. The Cedar Grove Civic Association also issued a letter of support. At this time, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary, here, we do have those letters the mayor's office just spoke of.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I have no requests.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put before a motion of approval.
Jeff, do you want a design review on this?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, all right, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yep.
And I too am in favor. The motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you, board members.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 131-1358, 24 Dawson Street. To extend living into the lower level and erect a new roof deck with spiral stair. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard setback on the lower deck. Article 65, Section 9, the number of allowed habitable stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Tim Johnson, Architect, 599 East Broadway, South Boston. Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are proposing to an existing two-story attached single-family dwelling to capture the unfinished lower level as living area with a walkout patio. There's these are existing condition plans. You can scroll down from those. Thank you. Next slide, please. There we go. As you can see, this is an attached two, attached two-story single-family dwelling. Capture the unfinished lower level as living area with a walkout patio. Rebuild the existing rear deck to code and add new roof deck via an interior stair, bulkhead, and roof door. There'll be no expansion of the building footprint or building height. And I can go through the drawings quickly. Next slide, please. Drawing showing, picture showing the existing building. It's the end unit of several townhomes, the existing rear deck. No expansion of the building footprint or building height. You can see the roof deck railing from the street. Next slide, please. And so, a lower-level plan is on the left. You can see we'd like to capture that living space. There is an existing toilet down there. We would have a walkout patio under the existing deck. The ceiling height here would be seven foot six inch minimum. Next slide, please. We originally proposed a rear spiral stair. However, working with the Director Butter, we moved that stair inside to a bulkhead with a roof door, as you can see on the roof plan on the right. Next slide, please. Section through the building showing the headroom in the media room at seven foot six minimum. And then our new interior stair to a bulkhead for access to the roof deck and the walkout patio underneath the existing deck. Next slide, please. There are no, no new window openings. We captured some existing bricked-up window openings in the lower level, as you can see, and the rear elevation. Next slide, please. And finally, the east elevation. Real quick, the zoning code relief. The FAR required here is 0.5. This two-bedroom, 2,100-square-foot unit would have an FAR of 1.5. Number of occupied stories exceeded. Since we are putting on a roof deck, that is an occupiable story and it's a two-and-a-half-story zoning sub-district. Finally, insufficient side yard setback. It's due to the decks.
Okay, this is an interesting building. This is in the Ashmont neighborhood, right?
Yes, sir.
Where most of the buildings are wood-framed. So it's kind of interesting to see this sort of brick masonry townhouse style that associate more with, I don't know, back there or, interesting. Anyway, so when you say bulkhead, access to the roof deck, that's, you mean the hatch, the same thing as hatch, by that?
Yes, 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 Mr. Chairman. If you scroll up to the building section again, please. Next one, next one. There we go. So there's the bulkhead with the roof.
Okay, okay. And that actually stayed there because, so the, the lower level we use for a media room. It looks like there's actually, there's walkout and a few steps up. But it's, okay, but it's not that far under, below grade.
Three feet.
Yeah, okay. All right. Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate, Mr. Chair.
Any questions from the board? Anybody here to offer testimony, public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted a butters meeting for this proposal on July 13th. There were concerns from Directa Butter regarding privacy, but the applicant has reportedly worked with them on addressing those concerns since then. The St. Mark's Area Civic Association submitted a letter of support. At this time, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support.
You?
Mr. Chair Secretary, here, we only have one letter of support.
Okay.
If you'll raise your hand here, Patricia, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Patricia Gallagher. I live at 22 Dawson Street. I'm the Director Butter. I really appreciate that the, my neighbor has moved the spiral staircase to the inside. I wonder if I could request, please, when they're working, building the roof deck, could, could the construction folks put down a piece of, a piece or two of plywood on my roof? I'm concerned about holes in, it's just the roll rubber roof on all of these attached homes. And I'm concerned about losing my roof for getting a hole in it.
Okay, well, okay, if we approve this, we will, we will certainly ask the proponent to be thoughtful about any impact on the neighbors. Anybody else?
No, no additional requests.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put before a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero? And I'm in favor as well and would just ask again the proponent to be thoughtful about the neighbors.
We certainly will, Mr. Chair.
Motion passes.
I might mess this name up, but I'm going to try my best. Calling a next case, calling BOA 137-8776, Three Lister Road. This is to add 36 feet wide and 12-foot rare existing, rare existing dwelling to expand three bedrooms along the back of the house. Violation is Article 69, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 69, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 69, Section 9, excessive floor area. And Article 69, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
I have a question, Mr. Paul, can you raise your hand? Paul Wood? Once you become a panelist, you'll have to under yourself so you can start speaking.
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Are you getting me now?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry, I don't know what happened there.
What's your name? Write on the record, please.
My name is Paul Wood, Boston Hammer, 12 Brier Street, Canton, Mass. I'm representing the owner of Three Lister Road.
All right, please tell us what you're proposing.
Well, it's a addition to the back of the home that's 12 feet by 36 feet along the backside to expand the three bedrooms that are on that, that's rear of the house.
That's a single-story addition?
It's a single-story addition, yes.
Okay, this looks to be, I'm looking at it on the map, this is the corner lot?
This is the corner lot.
Okay. All right, just, just walk us through the drawings quickly, please.
Okay, so the, as you can see, the, well, if you could go up one, one. As you can see, the, the lighter part on the right-hand side of the bottom there, the elevation is where the addition will be going on the rear of the house. It doesn't expand into the side or corner setback at all or the other side setback. It's just the rear setback that, because it's non-conforming and now the setback is now 40 feet, we're going to extend into that by about a foot and a half.
So you're, you're a foot and a half shy of the required setback?
Yes.
Okay, and you're basically continuing the roof line of the rear of the house there?
Yes, exactly.
All right, okay. Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate, Mr. Chair.
Okay. To the applicant, how many square feet are you adding total to the floor space?
Approximately 436. It's just a little over, about 70 square feet over the allowed space because it is a non-conforming lot.
Got it, okay, so this is a pretty de minimis. All right, any questions from the board? Is anyone here to speak in the, yeah, is there anyone here to speak on the proposal?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant completed the community process and I hosted an abutters meeting that was conducted on September 15th of this year. Present was only one abutter and a representative from District Councilor Ricardo Arroyo's office. The abutter that was present did speak in strong support and that same abutter did also send an email of support which was sent to the board for review. At this time, we would like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
The chair, I have no requests.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put before a motion of approval.
Jeff, do you want a design review on this?
If Ms. Barazza doesn't want it, I don't want it.
Yeah, it's in the rear of the property.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
And I too am in favor. The motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 129-0231, 231 Everett Street. Assist to erect a new structure with three units, two roof decks on a vacant lot. Violation is Article 27-T-5, this is in the East Boston I-Paw. Article 53, Section 56, our three parking loading is sufficient. Article 53, Section 9, additional lot area per unit. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit. And Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the petitioner, I also have Eric Zacherson from Context who the architect's on the proposal. As was mentioned, the proposal is to erect a new residential building with three condominium units. This rendering shows you that new building matching the continuity of the street. So directly next to us in this picture is a nine-unit development. We tried to keep with the height context of the majority of the buildings on the streetscape. The layout of this particular proposal, if we go to the next slide, please, thank you. And the slide after that. This just shows you a better understanding of the composition of the buildings in the area. More recently, there was a five-unit that the board just approved across the way from this building as well. Next slide, please. The layout of these plans, right now it is a vacant parcel and it has a curb cut with a gate, so that curb cut will be restored. Obviously, putting one street spot back on. The first floor would house the main entry of the building. It will also house Unit 1, which is 1,080 square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath, with a patio. We go up to the second floor. These are bi-level units. The second and third lower levels house the two beds and two baths. The upper levels are on the third floor that would house the office, kitchen, and half-bath. Those units are, again, also two-bed, two-bath, with 1,200, 10 square feet and 1,080 square feet respectively. We also have two exclusive roof decks to those units at 190 square feet, accessed only by hatch. Just to go over the violations, there are a number of them that were mentioned that we actually removed during our community process. This originally started out as a four-unit proposal. This particular zone is a 3F, 2,000, our lot size is 2,250 square feet. So we removed the use violation. We removed by taking off the fourth story. We removed the height violation and feet and in stories. The violation, we removed open space. The violations that are still standing are minimum lot size, 1,000 square feet. We have 500. Our FAR is 1.82, although that has come down from 2.33. We still do have a violation. What's allowed is 1.0. Our side yard is three. So we're proposing three on one side, so two and a half would be, three inches. We're right on the property line, so two and a half would be required. Our rear yard is close, we're at 25, 30 would be required. And right now, it's, does have a good green space in the back that we're proposing. We originally, so we were cited for a parking violation. We would be required to have three spots. We originally had parking as part of this proposal. In working with the community, they were concerned about the heights because that parking would have elevated the building. It was interior, parking for two spots. So we removed that and doing so brought the height down to the building. We have very close walking distance to Maverick T. Station. I can pause now for any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Drago, do you remind me why this rediscussion, what was the?
Administrative deferral, Mr. Chair, because of the size of the board.
Okay, got it, okay.
But we also used that time, Mr. Chair, to continue to work with, with the neighbors as well.
That, that, that's fine. Anyway, do you have, can you show an elevation, a proposed elevation again? Yeah, there we go.
Sure.
Okay, how far, how far is that roof deck setback from the front of the, are those roof decks, there are two of them, the first, the first one?
Yeah, they're in the back. They're set a good distance. I don't know if Eric Zacherson is, is on the call. 20 feet, 10 inches, sorry.
To the, to the first one from the, from the side? All right, so presumably, can't really see it from the street level?
Correct.
Okay, how are the drawings, Mr. Barazza?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The only, the questions I have is, we received a lot of comments regarding, obviously, that you don't have any parking, that they would have preferred parking on the inside of the building. But that flooding has been an issue in the area. Can you address water runoff concerns? And also, one of the issues that was brought up was that you don't have units large enough for families.
So we, yeah, thank you, Ms. Barazza. So just to answer all those questions, so we, we actually scaled back the project. So in order, one of the big things that came up was our rear setback. When we first started, these units were larger, but we only had a 10-foot setback. We had a five of them, went to 10. But setback was most of the concern from our Directa Butters. So we cut that in to have the green space, which cut the size of the units down. The flooding issue, we talked about our drainage system. We are slab-on-grade, so we're not digging out, you know, excavating down or putting any living space in the basement at all. We do, we will actually have green space for permeable surface where right now it's all hot-top in that area. So I think that may be part of the, the issue that's sort of rolling down. But we will have, obviously, a new water and sewer plan that addresses drainage, but also that permeable surface in back. The parking from our immediate butters, the concern was the building height. We are actually putting one parking space back. I know that doesn't solve all the problems, but right now there is an existing curb cut that's not being used. So that will be restored, creating one street space. It was really, again, we would have had to take another unit out and where it was a 3F district, we felt this was reasonable and we're so close to Maverick T. Station.
Okay, great, thank you.
There's, so this is slab-on-grade, I assume that means each of the utilities are in, separate in each of the units?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just want to see if there's a correction from Mr. Drago. I thought I heard him say that they weren't cited for insufficient open space?
We actually, I'm sorry, we actually removed that. I apologize.
So we have it as a violation as of yesterday?
Okay, so we have. Okay, so we have it as, we've got 390 square feet per dwelling, but 300 was cited. So, I mean, 300 is what's required, so we think that wasn't properly cited?
Okay, I mean, still a violation, just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry, okay, understood.
Okay.
Mr. Ujero, were you going to say something?
No.
Okay. All right, let's go to public testimony. Anyone speak on this project?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Natalia Venites with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted various abutters meetings for this project. The abutters were originally very concerned about the number of units, so the applicant agreed to bring down the number of units to three. One abutter also voices contend with the roof decks that were proposed. Abutters also expressed concerns about the water runoff affecting their properties. The applicant also met with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association and the membership voted to oppose the proposal. Those who opposed felt that the parking should have been included and that the units are not family-friendly. Our office has received two letters in opposition with our petition consisting of 16 signatures. And we also received 32 letters in support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, we do have those letters that the mayor's office just spoke of.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have no reasons.
Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
I two of them in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 1307730, 306 Sumner Street. This is erect an addition and change auction from three, core unit residential dwelling with rear decks. Violation, Article 25, Section 5, this is in the flood hazard district. Article 32, Section 32-4, this is G-Cod. Article 27T, this is in the East Boston I Part. Article 53, Section 8, the MFR is bidden in a 3F 2,000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 56, off street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the flood area ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, used open spaces insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, side yards insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Mr. Chairman, this project is located in the Jeffries Point section of East Boston, actually not far from the last presentation we just reviewed. As the secretary indicated, this is located within a flood hazard area. We also have G-Cod, so I don't know if you want to deal with that first.
Okay. Mr. Semenelli, you want?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, members of the board. Chris Semenelli, Boston-Grau Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
We have them as well, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's take a motion. Can I get a motion on that?
Motion to approve the G-Cod.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
I two of them in favor that that motion passes. All right, go ahead, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what we're looking at here is a quick site overview of the area of Sumner Street and the Jeffries Point section of East Boston. Our proposal would take the pre-existing three-unit nonconforming structure and convert that to a four-unit building. We are proposing a rear and vertical addition. If we can jump down to Slide 7, that will probably help us understand a little better about why we proposed this idea. Perfect. So what we see here is actually our proposed rendering, laid over the rendering of the building to our left. This was approved by the board last year as almost identical project. One of the challenges, obviously, that we deal with with this site being in the flood hazard plane is that although we do have the elevation to allow for a full walkout on the lower level, flood regulations will not allow for any habitable space. So taking that into consideration, any additional space that's being proposed would ideally use a vertical addition as opposed to using a lower level. This is consistent with a number of the projects on this section of Sumner Street. There are four-story buildings in the immediate vicinity, both pre-existing and recently improved. Our building would have a mix of three and two-bedroom units. Two of those would be three and two would be two-unit, two-bedroom units. But we want to jump down to Slide 10, that will show us our floor plans. Consistent with what the goals are for the Jeffries Point neighborhood, these are generously sized units. The two bedrooms are roughly around 1,150 square feet. The three-bedroom units, almost 1,400 square feet. The three-bedroom units are located at levels one and two. Those are flat-style units with units three and four being bi-level. Entry would be at the third level with access internally up to the fourth level. We are not proposing any roof decks, respect to this project. There is a setback on that fourth level, as we saw in the rendering, that does allow for some outdoor space in front of the building. We are proposing rear decks as well. By way of relief, we're asking for relief for multifamily units versus the three-up that is allowed in the district. Again, this is consistent with a number of the uses in the immediate vicinity. We do meet the minimum lot size requirement, however, we also do require relief for the side yard to the extent that we are adding in addition to the rear of the building. The building itself does not require a side yard on the left as it is a semi-attached condition. However, it does require 2.5 feet in the right. We do maintain that setback on the right side, it's the left side that we have. The concern with based upon the addition that's being proposed. I would point out that we designed this, same architect had designed this building consistent with the building next door. So our setback that is on the left side is matching the building immediately to our left. With respect to the rear yard, the condition that's required under Article 53 is 30-foot setback. We are at about 25 feet from the building and about 20 feet from the rear deck that's being proposed. So we are, again, keeping in alignment with the building that's immediately to our left and trying to respect that setback that's been established by the adjoining buildings. Height of our building is at 40 feet, four stories total, that's five feet taller than what the zoning code currently allows. However, again, being consistent with the building immediately to our left. With respect to the parking, because this is an existing, a pre-existing three-unit dwelling, we're only required to comply with the parking requirements under Article 53 for the additional unit. So that would require a variance for only one parking space. And again, even if we were able to add parking consistent with the city's policy on adding private curb cuts, we're instead requesting the variance rather than trying to comply with one parking space that actually would impact on street parking for the neighborhood. I'll pause there for any questions on the board.
The setback on the top floor, how far, how far a setback is that from the side of the building?
We're talking about the front deck, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If Eric is on, I think we just scroll down to the next slide, I think we can actually see it.
Rich, it's seven foot, six inches. Is Eric Zacherson Architectural Project?
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate, Mr. Chair.
No questions? Okay, any questions on the board?
Are these condominium or rental units?
This is intended, currently intended for homeownership. And obviously, that will depend upon where market is, but the plan at this time is for homeownership and that's one of the reasons why we have gone with the three-bedroom style units for the lower levels.
Thank you.
All right, is anyone here to speak on the project?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Natalia Venites with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted an abutters meeting for this project on March 24th and no abutters were in attendance. The applicant also met with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. The group voted to oppose a project with 12 members opposing and nine in support. Those who supported the project liked the size of the units and have proposed a sign-up of the building. Those who opposed believe that the project is too tall, it does not have enough green space, and there is a lack of parking in the area. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, we have that one letter that the mayor's office just spoke of.
The Chair, I have no reasons.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
And I two of them in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 12153285, Breed Street. This is to erect a new multifamily dwelling, four units. Violation, Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston I Part. Article 53, Section 9, the flood area ratio is excessive. And Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the petitioner, we also have Eric Zacherson from Context Design, who's the architect. This is a good rendering of the front proposed building at 5 Breed Street. Right now, there is a vacant parcel, it's all gravel throughout, it has a curb cut. It's been used to storage of vehicles in the past. We're proposing to erect a new four-story condominium building with four units. This is again slab-on-grade. The particular zoning district this falls in is neighborhood shopping. This falls within the proposed squares and corridors area of the plan, East Boston Plan that's being proposed now for allowing for more greater density and some development. If you look at the surrounding buildings, there's a three-unit to the left of us. There's an eight-unit to the right of us with commercial space on the ground level. Next slide, please. This just is an aerial view, so the board can just see the composition. 5A Breed is the vacant parcel. There is eight, there's four to six diagonal, there's three in the back. There's commercial multifamily residential directly across from us on both corners with nine units and a four to six directly across the street, plus multiple commercial storefronts mixed in. This particular lot size is 2,405 square feet. If you go to the next slide, please. And this is just an example, the blue arrow is sort of where our building would go. You can see the curb cut there now that would be restored. This is directly next to a new building that was approved a few years back. And you can see the large corner buildings that make up this particular area. Next slide, please. And again, just for context purposes, some more of those multifamily residential buildings. Next slide. And just a few more pictures on the corner and then diagonally behind us. Again, this is directly within Orient Heights Square area. Next slide, please. This is just a transportation map, so even though we do not have parking, as I mentioned, we're restoring one on-site, one parking spot on-street. And we are 275 feet from Orient Heights MBTA Station with the blue line directly across from us. Next slide, please. The layout of these units, pretty similar. These are all two-bedroom, two-bath. We have a first-floor unit at 1,155 square feet. If you want to go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador. And then the second floor is a two-bed, two-bath at 1,140 square feet. And then the third and fourth floor, bi-level units. Those are 1,120 and 1,140, two-bed, two-bath with living space. And the only decks are on that top floor, so there's no roof decks, but there's walkout to the front and the back. We actually, on that fourth floor, we recessed both the front and the rear of the building. So we now have on that top floor a 10-foot pullback in the front and a 5-foot pullback in the rear, just based on comments we heard from neighbors. We also worked on our rear setback. We need the requirement of 20 feet. Just adding green space, but right now, there's just asphalt on the hot top that are there now. And we have a landscape area in the back for the residents. The violations that were mentioned, we've got FAR, we're at 2.1, and 1.0 is allowable. The height of the building is 42 feet, 6 inches. Our highest point at 35 is allowed, although this is, all of those buildings on the corner, building diagonally in the back all match the height that we're proposing, are pretty close. And then we also, we're not able to create parking, but we have walking distance to the T and restoring that one spot. I can pause for any questions.
Okay, Mr. Drago, again, was there a reason for the rediscussion because of administrative deferral?
There was, we had two administrative, because I believe the board was five at one point.
Okay. Okay. So on the top floor, you have a setback in the front of 10 feet and setback in the rear of 5 feet, and those are both decks that go out to the facade of the building?
Correct. A little bit under, but yeah.
Okay. All right, how are the drawings, then, Ms. Barazza?
Mr. Chair, the drawings are fine.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is anyone here to give testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Natalia Venites with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted an abutters meeting on June 1st. We had only three abutters in attendance. Despite very close proximity to the Orient Heights MBTA Station, their main concerns were the lack of parking in the area, density and quality of life disruption while construction was ongoing. During the community process, the applicant agreed to both front and rear pullbacks from the fourth floor to reduce massing based on feedback and will be adding back a curb cut to the street as well. The applicant met with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council in June and the group voted to oppose the project. Our office has received three letters in support and two in opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, we have those letters that the mayor's office just spoke of.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. There's some concern about access by the fire department since this is so close to the homes on Breed Street and Antrim Street is behind it. And they're just worried about, should there be a fire, how would the Boston Fire Department gain access to it? And I'd like to request that the proponent get the approval from the Boston Fire Department in the name of public safety. Thank you.
Mr. D'Amico, is there anything in particular about this site on Breed Street? Or is that a problem with Breed Street in general?
No, it's basically this, you know, proposal because the lot is so small and so narrow. It's going to look stupid, but the important thing was the public safety issue about getting access by the Boston Fire Department because the rear property is right behind this one. And they're just concerned about that because, God forbid, if there's a fire there, it would have the ability to spread quite quickly. And that's the only reason why I would like to make that, you know, proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? I'm a little confused on that. I don't, because this lines up with all the other houses directly on Breed.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's why, that's why I asked if this was like the problem with Breed Street or... I think Mr. D'Amico explained the issue fairly well. We can, you can deal with the fire department separately from this board. Okay, anybody else?
My name is Don.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. With Chairman, members of the board, my name is Perez, her presenting the carpeters. She knew one of them was going to support this project.
Thank you.
All right, Bob Riggo, can you state your name and address for the record, please, once needed?
And the owner of 1024 Bailey Street, which is the property behind the lot, in a much more of the project.
Thank you.
Thanks. And Chairman, the last person, can you state your name and address for the record, please? I sent a request to unmute you. Have some connectivity issues there. Otherwise, I have, okay, there you go. Okay, go ahead, yeah, name and address for the record. Hi, you're speaking, we can't hear you. Sorry, not sure what's happening. I have no additional words to say.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn, I missed, Ms. Dunn, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
And I two of them in favor and would just suggest that the proponent check in with the Boston Fire Department on that issue.
Thank you. Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 1351772, 42 to 44 Dawson Street.
All right, go ahead, sorry, I'm going to mute you, go on.
All right.
This is gut rehab with dormer work on the left and right sides, low extension, well as extension living space into the basement area. Violation to Article 68, Section 8, insufficient side yard setback, dormer, Article 68, Section 8, excessive FAR. And Article 68, Section 8, the number of allowed occupied stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adam Tamaranti, with the business address of 168 St. South Boston. With me today is the owner David Gaffey and the architect Adam Schoenhardt. Just want to let it know for the record, we are back here today due to an administrative deferral. This, again, this is a proposal for a full gut rehab of an existing two-family dwelling with an addition of two dormers, one on the left side and one on the right side. The existing footprint of the building will be maintained. The basement will be finished space allocated to Unit 1. Has two light wells on the right side of the property and one light well on the left side of the property with 8-foot ceiling height. The dormer on the left side is an expansion, the bump out on the first floor to continue up to the third floor, adding additional living space for the third floor. The dormer on the right side is approximately a 3-foot expansion to the existing dormer to allow for proper stairway height for building code compliance. This proposal is located within a 2F 5,000 sub-district. We have three violations. FAR, the existing FAR is a .75 and we are reducing the FAR to a .71. The living space within Unit 1 was reduced. Since it's existing non-conforming and not being increased, no relief was necessary. However, I am still seeking ZBA approval in the event that any square footage calculation may be inexact or that a minor change during construction results in the addition of even a few additional square feet. Building height, we are excessive in the stories department. What's compliant here is 2.5 stories, but the addition to match the peak of the building brings us up to three stories. The side yard, both side yards, again, since we're maintaining the existing footprint of the building, they were non-conforming pre-existing. Unit 1 will continue to be a two-bedroom at approximately 1,176 square feet. Unit 2 will be a four-bedroom on two levels, floor 2 and 3, at approximately 653 square feet. At this time, we're going to open it up for any questions.
Okay, so my main question has to do with the extension of living space into the basement. Two questions, what is the, that space going to be used for? And the second question is, what is the, how far below grade is the floor?
Okay, so the first, the first question I'm going to, I'm going to answer, that's going to be allocated specifically for Unit 1, just as additional living space. No bedrooms will be put into the actual basement. As far as the second question.
What will, what, if it's no bedroom, what will it be?
Just, just additional living space, office, den, storage, whatever the necessary need is for that unit owner. But it will not be any bedrooms in the basement.
Okay, and how much below grade is it?
And I'm going to defer to Adam on this, who is actually the architect who is joining us today.
Liz, hi, my name is Adam Schoenhardt. It's an 8-foot ceiling height, as we mentioned, and it's about 5 feet, 5 and 1/2 feet below grade. You know, kind of somewhat depending on where you're measuring from because the grade does incline a bit. We have two walkout French glass, French doors going out, staircases from that area as just secondary egress, as well as just getting some more light for the recreational use of this basement, you know, ping pong tables, whatever.
Wait, you said you have two French door egresses? There's one on the rear, where's the other one?
Yeah, they're both on the rear.
Oh, they're both in the rear, okay.
Yeah, if you go to, if you go over the plan, you can see that.
Or a plan of the basement, please?
Sure, down, I think it's down, you go down, go down, scroll down the other direction. That's one, you can see them here, actually, if you stop right there. You can see that there's staircases on either side of this dining space for that unit. And staircase, the staircases are really letting full light as well as for children. We built these as really family houses. We make, kept it as a two-family to maintain the family nature and keep as much garden and green space. And so this allows you to be in the backyard and go down to the basement.
Well, I'm confused, is, what we are looking at, the basement floor plan?
No, I was just showing you the orientation of the first floor. Scroll down, scroll down one more, excuse me. And then you can see that you can come up, there's the same staircase going to the backyard, letting light, but giving you the ability for children in particular to be able to use this as a place space or workspace.
All right, well, it is well below grade, but it doesn't appear, there's no bedrooms, okay, all right.
There's bedroom noted on the full architectural, on the section, but I'll, I'll just put a proviso to not have a bedroom.
Got it.
Great, thank you, yeah, and that could have been just, so the first original plans did show a bedroom, which was removed during the community process.
All right, well, we'll take, we'll make sure, okay. Ms. Marazza, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions on the board? Moving to public testimony.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an abutters meeting on July 18th. No concerns were raised. And the McCormick Civic Association has written a letter of support for this proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Joe McGaughan, City Councilor Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Joe beat me to the punch. Mr. Chair Secretary, we do have that letter that the mayor's office just broke over.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Mark.
Anybody else?
We have nobody standing.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval with two proviso to have BPDA design review and the second that there will be no habitable bedrooms in the basement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Don?
Yes.
Ms. Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Pignato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
I two him in favor, the motion passes.
Great, thank you.
On the last case of the day, calling BOA 1361985, 108 to 108 East Alston Street. Let's erect a new five-town homes. Violation by Article 51, Section 8, the MFR forbidden use of the 2F 5,000 sub-district. Article 51, Section 9, the FODA ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the building has excessive stories. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9.4, eventual regulation for the location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Maranti, with the business address of 168 St. South Boston. With me today is the applicant Brian McGrath and as well as the architects Alita and David from Chuen Associates. And again, please note that this case is in front of you today, again, for a rediscussion based upon an administrative deferral. The current site consists of an existing three-family and a garage in the rear of the lot. This proposal is to erect a new three-story building with five ownership townhomes with seven parking spaces, five garage spaces, and there'll be two visitor parking spaces. There was previously a change on this plan. The original proposal was for six townhomes. But since then and throughout the community process, we reduced the massing of the building to provide more green space and to allow for more parking as well. Again, so back to the parking, parking will be accessed by utilizing an existing curb cut in the driveway. This is a 9,000-square-foot lot with a total of 9,100 square feet of living space being proposed. Proposal is located within a 2F 5,000 sub-district. The five townhomes will be approximately 1,650 square feet to 1,690 square feet. All unit layouts will mirror each other with the first floor consisting of a garage for one car and an office space in the rear of the garage. Second floor will consist of a kitchen, living area and a bedroom along with the balcony. And a third floor will consist of two bedrooms. The proposed FAR here is a 1.0 and a .6 is what is allowed by the code. Building height is under at 32 feet 5 inches, as 35 feet is what is required. But we are excessive in stories, proposing three stories here and 2 and 1/2 is what is required. These stories in the roof line is consistent with what's been in the neighborhood. Front yard, we're proposing 16 feet 2 inches, 20 is what is required by code. This is a pre-existing, the current structure is at 6 feet 4 inches. The side yard, 3 foot on the left and 22 feet on the right, 10 foot is what is required by code. Approximately, we're about 15 feet away from the abutting structure, which is also, there is a driveway between the two. One thing I'd like to note, take is as far as the open space, there's no requirement for open space. But we have approximately about 2,806 square feet of open space, which will be the equivalent of 561 square feet per unit. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions.
So this is, these are townhouses, are they for, are they for sale, I'm assuming, rental?
Yes, ownership.
Ownership, okay. And the orientation of the building is actually sort of, kind of perpendicular to the street, right?
Yes.
So, but, or looking, this is, no, this is a good rendering. So the bottom left square there, that's front-looking from Alston Street?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got an entrance into the first unit from the, from the street, but all the other ones are from the side?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's interesting, okay. All right, how are the drawings, then, Ms. Marazza?
Mr. Chair, the drawings, the drawings are adequate. Can you please explain the access to the side elevation? Because I see that you have entryways on the side as well, but looking at the site plan, it's, there's really no sidewalk to get to the side entry.
Yeah, so I'm going to pass it over to Chuen's office, I believe David with us, and David can.
It's actually the image, it's the image to the bottom, bottom right.
To the bottom, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that should really be depicted as a walkway to all those humans.
But there's, but there's garages under the units, correct?
Yes, there are garages under the units.
So is the assumption that people will drive in and then have access to their unit from inside the garage?
Yes.
Okay, but so the walkway is additional, so, so, I mean, I guess this is my sort of question, because it is oriented at a right angle to the street, looking, where are the front doors? You got the one front door facing Alston, but where are the other front doors?
The front doors are off the driveway. To the right of the garage, each of the garage doors.
Okay.
Can you go to, can you go to the site plan where you, the actual site plan, I think it's the next, I think it's number three, keep going down. Right here. So what you're depicting is entry to the side yard setback that has the least amount of setback. If you zoom in, it's only 3 feet. So you're, you're imagining, I mean, not imagining, to get access to that, you're accessing both to the left and to the right, correct?
No, really, realistically, the front doors are off of the drive area because that's where the stair comes down and that's the, the other side with the 3-foot side setback, those doors really open into an office. So the actual entrance to the unit is off.
Yes, that is correct. I'm looking at the next page, which is a blow-up site plan. Can you go to the next page? Number four, page four of 11. Yep, right here. So how am I to access the, the office space from all of those bushes along the sidewalk or the walkway?
It's, it's really just a second means of egress from the unit itself. It's really not meant to be something that's accessed all the time, but we could definitely change that into a walkway along that entire length and take the bushes out.
Okay, so you're seeing, you're seeing that it's really, it's just a second means of egress, but it's not really a way to enter into your office space privately?
Correct, correct.
So to answer Mark's, I guess the front door of these, of these units are along the.
Next to the garage.
Next to the garage, yeah, there is no front.
Yeah, yeah.
Even the front, even the front door is letting you into the office?
Right, and the front door from Alston Street, the one.
From Alston Street, exactly, it's not even to a unit, it's to an office.
Right, which then you can, which then can lead to the unit. You can walk, you can walk back through that little walkway next to the garage.
Right, and if you look at the Google, the, the, there is a topology that's similar to the seven townhouses, but it's on a corner which allows frontage to all those seven townhouses.
Yeah.
So it's a very, this is like an in-between lot.
Okay. All right, any, any other questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the proponent or in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Frank Mendoza here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, Alston Brighton liaison. No concerns expressed at the abutters meeting. Couple of abutters wrote letters in opposition based off of construction and traffic concerns, being on a busy road. The Brighton-Alston Historical Society wrote a letter in opposition based off the demo portion. The ACA did previously send a letter the last time around, deferring to the judgment of the board. They've mentioned this morning that their opposition had softened, or rather, the members of the ACA in opposition had softened their opposition due to the changes recently made and that they've, the ACA also further feels that a further reduction in size and density would continue to soften opposition. At this time, referring to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Marmo Cray from Council of Brighton's office. Excuse me, sorry. This is the first time our office has had an opportunity to look at these plans, so at this time, the council would like to defer to the board. If the, if the board does choose to approve the project, we would like to request BPDA design review with attention to incorporating all trash disposal, trash room into the condos themselves. We're trying to recommend that for most projects due to the road and issues ongoing in the neighborhood. We'd also like to request that permeable pavers be used for the driveway. Thank you. I do have a raised hand, Tony.
I'm sorry, no more raised hands?
No, Tony has his hand raised. Yep.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Tony Disidoro representing the Alston Civic Association. Just to kind of summarize a little bit, this is a little bit of a, listening to the discussion, a little bit of a moving target. I wish the proponents were, had been a little bit more sensitive to the community review process. I found out by accident this morning of the decision to reduce the number of units from six to five units. This started off as a rental project. And if you remember, the last hearing when they were granted an administrative deferral, the chair was also kind enough to share with them a BPDA recommendation of denial without prejudice because they felt that the, the project was too dense and too high for the surrounding community. So obviously, and again, starting off as a rental project, they switched to condominiums. I want to just reiterate to the proponent that, you know, we're hearing, I noticed in an earlier hearing, talking about, well, we're going to start off as condominiums and then see how the market responds. But in Alston Brighton, given the low homeownership, owner occupancy in our community, we take a commitment to condominiums very seriously. So if this project was to be approved again, we reiterate our demand that the proponent commit to building condominiums. And more importantly, as you brought up earlier, Mr. Chair, that these condominiums be offered in the open market for public sale and that the proponent simply doesn't convert them to condominiums and then hold on to them all and rent them out. These are, the commitment to go to condominiums is a deal breaker for us in many ways. So I just want to reiterate. So I just want to reiterate that. We do appreciate the opposition that was expressed, as was mentioned by the, his office of Neighborhood Services, was the height density and amount of lot coverage. Reducing it down from 6 to 5, again, without being able to check with my membership, I would assume would lessen a little bit more of the opposition to the project, given that the proponents recognized they needed to downsize this project and increase open space on the site. So we will defer judgment to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Disidora. Points well taken. Okay, anything, anybody else?
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice, given the fact that the site planning is not completely really thought out in terms of how it fits in relation to its adjacencies, and also to provide a little bit more time for the architect and developer to really have plans that reflect the exterior in terms of how one would approach the home and its entries.
I think that's a really good idea. I mean, the reduction in density seems to have potentially solved that issue, and there are other things about it that are good. But anytime we see one of these projects that is perpendicular to the streetscape, it starts off with, that's a problem that has to be solved, as opposed to just saying, this is what it is.
Right, so the height seems about right.
Yeah.
You know, maybe it is too dense, it needs to go down by one more to allow for there to be better open space planning and better approach to really respond to it, to the street.
Yeah, yeah, this has got to relate to the street, okay. Appreciate the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Don?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
And me too, the motion passes. I think you're not that far off from having a good proposal, but there's still some work to do, so please take that back. And I believe that is, Mr. Fortune, that's it, right?
Thank you.
You are correct, Mr. Chair.
Recording stopped.
See you all next time, happy trails.